But as NPR's Domenico Montanaro reports at today's event, the president seemed to take age in stride.
On his 81st birthday, Biden spared a pair of birds from Minnesota named Liberty and Belle on the South Lawn on this crisp fall day in Washington, and he poked a little fun at himself in the process.
This is the 76th anniversary of this event, and I want you to know I wasn't there in the first one.
While the turkey lobby first gave presidents turkeys in 1947, those birds were meant to be eaten. Pardon-ing them didn't officially start until decades later. Biden's age has become a problem for his reelection campaign, but he hopes keeping it light and reminding Americans what they have to be thankful for can keep him from running afoul of voters. Domenico Montanaro, NPR News, Washington.
The seven o'clock session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here, and a qualmous present. The invocation tonight will be delivered by Bishop Jamal Jackson, pastor of Refreshing Church, and following Bishop Jackson's invocation, I will lead you in the prayers of allegiance. So please join Bishop Jackson as he comes now and gets the invocation. Would you bow your heads with me as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first I begin this season of Thanksgiving by saying thank you. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, and we need to fulfill our calling for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or for the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that the citizens ought to obey the authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. So therefore, tonight, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people in this community, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Thank you for personal peace for them in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda tonight set before them. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and in and around our beloved city of Roanoke. It is in your most blessed name and holy that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one brother, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, can you bring us out of closed session?
Oh, yeah.
Welcome, everybody, to our second session today, and I especially recognize all of our young people that are here tonight. There's a gentleman here with a dolphin's head on, a suit, and real sharp, I tell you. So, and I'm looking forward to the athletes that's going to come up at some point. So we've got a whole host array of young people here with us tonight. All right. First thing, though, we want to come out of closed meeting, and I'll ask the vice mayor to make a motion.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Just, thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and thank you, and we, and we're going to come out of closed session. All right, let's get going. Right now, we're going to go to presentations and acknowledgements and the recognitions of winners of the 19th Annual Fire Prevention Week Art Contest, and I'm going to invite Rachel Hale, Community Risk Reduction Specialist, to join me at the podium, followed led by our chief, Chief Hobart, and his staff.
All right, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll let you move on.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, city manager, Cal, thank you very much. Again, 19th Annual Art Contest for Fire Prevention Month, which was October. I will tell you, we had a tremendous amount of entries like we've had every year, but we have some really young, talented, young folks in our community, and we're going to show you some of those. I appreciate Ms. Reynolds and the mayor coming to the awards recognition last Tuesday night, held at Station 5. This program will not be possible without the donations of the Rockingham Group, Mission Barbecue, and a few others, because it really is completely funded by donations, and the kids, the winners really get some good prizes as they walk away from what they've accomplished. Before I go further, and we recognize them, I do want to recognize some of the key people that make this possible, and that is the city school, art teachers and the representatives from city schools. So if you're here, would you please stand? Without their continued support, and some of the art teachers have been with us through all 19 years, I will tell you, it's phenomenal, the support we get from the schools to get this program and get it embedded into our school system so that we can really practice fire prevention, and this was no different than we've had in the years before. The other persons, people I'd like to recognize, is the family of the winners up front. So if you're a family member of a winner, please stand. And without their support and their love for their winners, it wouldn't be possible. So thank you very much. The next person I want to recognize is Rachel Hale, our Community Risk Reduction Specialist. She's the one who's putting this on. She engages with the school system, the teachers, and the students, and bring this to fruition so that we can give you the winners today. I will tell you, it is a phenomenal, phenomenal opportunity for us to engage and see what we have in our community. I see what we have upstairs, but today, it's really kind of a unique circumstance, because also downstairs, you have football players that you're going to see come up here, and you also have another round of art winners, so you're in for a treat tonight. So without further ado, I would like for you to acknowledge some of the art. We had 52 entries this year. Of the 52 entries, we had 14 winners, and some of those people are here today, and we want to make sure we recognize those. We also had nine school systems represented in the winner contest, in the winner category, okay? Deputy Chief Andy Foley is going to come and acknowledge the winners, and Rachel's going to help with that.
All right, great. All right, first off, we're going to start with everybody that's here, but first off, I thought, I'm sorry.
First off, was actually Deputy Chief Foley's choice, which was my choice, which was Bradley Witt.
Do they have their artwork?
They did. Would you like to go and show it off?
There you go.
Well, I was on my job earlier, and they said, "I'm here," so, okay, I'm ready now. Look at me, there you are. I always give you a count of three, and Rachel is in the picture. Are you in there? One, two, three. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next was Buddy's choice, and I believe the teacher's here to accept that award, and it's Sarai Carrillo Perez.
It's a part of, it's a part of the routine. One. Okay, there we are. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you. Oh, I'm in the way. That's why you're not announcing.
She's looking, you're good. So next, we're going to go over to kindergarten and second grade. This is for second place. This was actually a team effort. It's Dana Oyelow Silva and Sabe Sagaye.
Yeah, they gotta walk around and parade the artwork.
That's right. I like that. Yeah. There you go. Yes.
That's really nice.
Excellent, I love dogs.
Very good.
There you go.
All right. Okay, very good. On the count of, on the count of three.
I think she's got to get hers.
Yeah, there, oh wait, I think you each have one. There you are.
There we go.
There, there we are. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
All right, first place in this category goes to Dawson Farmer.
And look, even the painting, the picture has the dolphin colors. I mean, my son would love this.
I gotta send this to my son.
All right, here we are. All right, Miami Dolphins. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, next, we move on to third through fifth grade. Third place, I believe teacher's going to be here for this one as well, Ofilio Caes Mendez.
Oh, we didn't, we missed out on that one. All right, yeah, yeah, this one has a lot going on in it, but that's okay. One, two, three. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, so we did say somebody show up. This is going to be actually the chief's award, and this is going to be Brooklyn Dalton.
Very, very nice, very nice. It's safety starts with you. Yes, very nice.
Okay, and I'm taking the picture up here. There we are. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, so this is back to the third through fifth grade. Second place is going to be Angelique Amore Nolasco.
Okay. Big smile for me. One, two, three. There we are. Thank you.
All right, and first place goes to River Greer.
And look at, look at me. One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
All right, last, we go to middle school, and this is third place, and this is going to be a teacher, Krista Elliott.
Okay, there we are. One, two, three. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to all our winners, as well as every student that entered.
Are we going to get a group pattern with the chief, or you already did that?
If you like.
Okay, all right, yeah, everybody get in with the chief.
Come on, Mayor, you get on that side. There you go.
Man, I thought you were going to climb over. I'd like to see that. Hold your art up. All right, hold your art up, and I will count to three. One. Oh, there we go, we got to get it. And I, and I think the dolphin is pretty covered right there, can't see him at all. Yeah, 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 there you go. Yeah, there you go. That, that's, that's much better. Much better, much better. There we are. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
And again, once again, thank you very much for allowing us to present this talented young folks to, before council, and we're looking forward to next year, as, again, 19, next year will be 20, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief, and your staff. Enjoy it. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, I want to ask Katie Hetrick. Based on the list, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Katie Hetrick, Community Inclusion Coordinator, to join me at the podium.
All right, they're coming right on. They're coming right on.
Okay.
I don't think they're up here yet.
Your staff changed this round, so.
They're on the way, ma'am.
It's good to recognize young people who are going to do good things. Otherwise, though, when they do good things, let them know it's appreciated and encourage them, inspire them to go on. So that's one of the pleasant things and things that I enjoy, recognizing young people. All right, I'm going to ask Katie, who's our community inclusion coordinator, to join me at the podium and assist with the presentation of the certificates, and this is the recognition of My City Academy graduates. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. It seems unfortunately we have to go after all of the cute children and their artwork. Our presentation is slightly less cute, but just as exciting. So this is our second year of doing My City Academy, which has become one of my favorite programs that we do. We developed this program kind of as an interpretation of our Leadership College to make sure that our new coming immigrant and refugee community was able to connect with city services. We went to the police station, the fire department, libraries, Public Works Center, just to make sure that this group of folks was able to connect names and faces, so as they're interacting with city staff, they have friends and people that they recognize and are able to connect their communities with resources as well. We had six folks that went through the program this year. Unfortunately, we only have two that were able to join us tonight, so we'll present their certificates. But we had folks this year from Mexico, Colombia, Argentina, Afghanistan, and Togo in West Africa. So a really cool group of folks, just getting to know them, getting to teach them about what we do in the city. And we actually, Mayor, you may or may not know this, a couple weeks ago, we visited your office and just let new ones in there. It was fine. So we were able to just see council chambers, see kind of the inner workings of government. And one of our participants, I'd asked them if they would ever have a similar opportunity in their home countries to meet elected representatives, interact with the government, and they all said absolutely not. That's not something that we have. And one of our participants said, "I already feel more like a Roanoker than I ever did in my hometown, in the country where he was from." So it's just so exciting to be part of such a welcoming and inclusive city that allows us to do programs like this, and I'm not even sure, I think 15 to 20 city departments were involved in the presentations. So it's a really cool program, a lot of really neat folks getting connected with us. So if our participants will come forward. We have, these are very unique folks. They are both actually here because their husbands were transferred to Roanoke to work. So we have them for a good long while, which we are very excited about. So first, Cindy Iran, here at the ladies. Are we doing one photo?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Count three. One, two, three, and one more. There we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can talk a little bit, I guess.
Hi, Patrick.
Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Identify yourself.
I will do, I will do that. So I'm Patrick Boas. I oversee all the recreation for the Parks and Rec Department. So within that, we have all the programming and then our facilities as well, so our rec centers and our pools, after-school programs. So a piece of that is the athletic programming. So tonight, we're going to celebrate the fall season. The, the nice thing about this is a handful of years ago, back in 2019, we did a lot of restructuring with how we're running youth athletics in the city and trying to address some of the participation declines that we'd seen over the years. And so through that process, there were, there were a bunch of things that were put on hold in the past, and we've been able to bring those back. And so one of which was, this is the first postseason play with our fall program that we've done since 2019, the ability to get access to the high schools again, to do our games there, has been a huge draw for the kids. And with that, we've seen growth, at least within the last, last year and this year, in participation numbers with the youth as well as team numbers. And so I would say, you know, a lot of that is stuff that has, the work that has been done behind the scenes, not just Parks and Rec staff, though I'd obviously want to give a shout out to our staff that have really dedicated a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to the program, but also the but also the, all of the volunteers that are involved. So, we have four recreation clubs that we work with that represent each, each part of the city, and they really put a lot of energy and effort to help grow these programs. And then, on the next level there, you've got, you know, the rec clubs that have the presidents and athletic directors. You have the volunteer coaches and, and the parents that are really involved and put a lot of dedication into the program. And then, you have the dedication, excuse me, the dedication of the youth that are coming out, and coming out to practice, they're coming out to the games, learning the fundamentals of the game, sportsmanship, et cetera. So, it's been really fun to see this stuff come back, and so, that's been all part of the process. So, we'll celebrate these kids, when they show up, we'll celebrate these kids when they get up. Yeah, so there's, any questions?
No questions directly on that, it's just, you spoke about all the work that Parks and Rec has done, all the work that has gone on behind the scenes, and I don't know if it's been publicly said in here today. I think that just points to part of why Parks and Recreation got the honorable mention as one of the best places to work. I wanted to congratulate you on that, make sure that gets back to Michael and everybody else in there tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
I didn't know that, that's all right.
It's in our email.
Yeah, and Michael tonight, he's at a Little League meeting, so he's at a Little League board, board meeting tonight. But thank you, yeah, that was pretty exciting.
Well, let me just share, as we, we're looking at the ten and under, and twelve and under tackle football team. That means they put people on the ground. And they're coming here tonight, and we want to extend really our congratulations to both of them, in the run of City Parks and Recreation for an outstanding season. And the team really demonstrated incredible talent, sportsmanship, determination, culminating in the crown, crowning of two, two remarkable champions. Hey. Good to see you, man. I'll tell you what, we're gonna do the ten and under, the ten and under. Do you want to, I'll tell you what I do.
I can read all the names from here, basically.
We got, is that mic on right there?
Grandin Court.
What's your name?
Keenan.
Jeb, Highland Park.
Sawyer, Grandin Court.
Willing, Grandin Court.
Demetrius, Crystal Spring.
Kendrick, Wasina.
Cordae, Wasina.
A.J., Fishbrow Park.
Robert, Crystal Spring.
Luke, Crystal Spring.
I know forty-two, want you to say your whole name.
Bruce Rosen, North Cross.
Jack Erickson, Crystal Spring.
Riley, Highland Park.
Noah Erickson, Crystal Spring.
All right, let's get these young guys. All right. Coaches. For the twelve and under team. Bruce is the son of former city councilman, Paul Rose. And he's brutal out there on the football field, I tell you that.
I'm tired right now, 'cause I hate to go four flights of steps. Um, we definitely wanted to congratulate you on a season well played. We all got, y'all got the medallions at the end of the game. We thought it'd be a good surprise for you tonight to understand this is your trophy. This is the first playoffs that we had since 2019. And we've seen growth in this, and we thank you so much for your hard participation, your hard work, and a great job done by your coaches. Congratulations on the season well done.
Mayor, I guess you're gonna have to organize them inside.
Yes, sir, Ken Carter, native of Roanoke, William Philip graduate.
Amy Parker.
Corinne Waller.
Jimmy Russell.
They gotta face me first.
And you gotta turn around, press her.
We gotta go face me, so you can get all these people in the background. And then, we gotta, and then we gotta tighten up a little bit, I got a little iPhone. Yeah, we still gotta take up a little bit more. Okay, yeah, there we go, we got them all in, we got them all in, there we go. All right, on the count of, then we got people running.
Is my boy Block with the red on and with the glasses on?
Okay, now that the ladies are out of the picture.
Okay, make sure you're seen there.
On the count, okay, now you need to get back in. Okay, just one second, give me a second, here we are, on the count of three. One, two, three. Good picture, good picture. All right, thank you. Oh, we saw a strobe. Congratulations, guys!
My grandson did the wrestling, my boys, my boys play the football.
Hello, council.
Oh, yes, we did, oh, those are. Oh, right, right.
They throw people on the ground for them.
All right, all right, and a little cheerleader, all right. Nice job. This is fun.
All right, the Stausen, it rains. The twelve and under team. I know a school that got those colors. I know a school that had the color.
The whole, the colors go.
All right, guys. Now, what I'm asking you to do is to raise council, and just tell them to go in and the school will do too.
I'm Jules Williams, and I go to Madison.
Ali Williams, and I go to Addison.
Evan Bibby, and I go to Addison.
Ethan Bibby, and I go to Addison.
Xavier Jones, and I go to John P. Fishwick Middle School.
Gabriel Treg, and I go to Round Hill.
Alvin Hardy Jr., and I go to Addison.
Sharon Brown, and I go to James Madison.
My name is Jeremiah Croft, and I go to Roanoke Valley Christian School.
All right.
You got anybody set, you don't have an assistant? I ain't got a assistant like that.
Oh, I'm Coach Williams. I'm originally from Pennsylvania, I've been down here for about six years on and off.
Thank you for volunteering, committing yourself. Many of us have been coaches and coached youth teams, and we know the time and effort that it takes to do that. So, we thank you for your commitment to our young people. And this young lady here, a BSU graduate.
Hello, my name is Deidra Treg, and I am a born and raised native of Roanoke, graduate of Patrick Henry High School. And our head coach could not be here tonight. He is not only a basketball coach for North Cross, but his son had a basketball scrimmage tonight, so Ty Campbell couldn't be here right now.
Thank you, let's give all of this a good hand, and we'll go out soon.
All right. All right, get around, get around, get around. Yeah, 'cause the last guy, yeah, the trophy was covering him up, it's still, yeah. Okay, there we go, there we go.
See, wait a minute, Mayor, and then he stepped over.
Oh, there we are, that's a good, okay, there we are, oh, and you're all in the picture.
Okay, y'all there, tiptoe.
One, two, three. One, two, and three. Good picture, way to go.
Let me say about this young man right here.
Uh-oh, here we go.
Last week, I was gonna say this, I gotta say this. He was at the C I W A championship game, and I had to find a ball boy to go up and down the sideline with the football. So, he had a chance to do this, gave him, and did a good job.
All right, gave him a pass.
And he now knows, it's an early recruiting venture for Virginia University. Thank you all, thank our recreation department for your commitment and dedication, thank you so much.
Well, you, how can she be neutral when Matt graduated from Flynn and Christina and my son?
Yeah, but she, she works for the system now. Madam Clerk, I got caught up in the excitement of weed now.
At fifteen-one.
Okay. With public hearings. All right. Item fifteen-one is a request of local, of the Local Environmental Agricultural Project Incorporated to rezone property located at ten twenty-seven Patterson Avenue Southwest from R M two residential mixed density district and C N commercial neighborhood district with conditions to C N commercial neighborhood district and repeal all conditions proffered as part of a previous rezoning on the same property enacted through ordinance number three four seven six six dash oh five oh one oh oh, relating, relating to a restriction against outdoor advertising. Maureen Best is the executive director and the spokesman. There's an ordinance.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to, one, repeal all conditions proffered as part of a previous rezoning on property located at ten twenty-five, ten twenty-seven, excuse me, Patterson Avenue Southwest, official tax map number one 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 two zero zero nine, enacted through ordinance number three four seven six six dash oh five oh one zero zero, relating to a restriction against outdoor advertising, and to rezone such property from R M two residential mixed density district and C N commercial neighborhood district with conditions to C N commercial, commercial neighborhood district, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. It must be noted that the city planning commission recommends approval. And at this time, is Ms. Best here?
We're in time here, but I'm Kelly Teammate, Director of Children's Police.
All right, do you have anything you want to say, or you just wanna respond to any questions that council may have?
Yeah, I can just respond to questions.
Okay, well, if we have any, which you, you come up to the mic, respond to them. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
No, sir.
Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and ask my colleagues on council if they got any thoughts, or comments, or questions. Heard none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Tavallison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. All right, and this action is approved. All right, item number two is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to amend the Roanoke Charter of nineteen fifty-two to reflect a change in election dates and meetings of city council, of council generally. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title of paragraph.
A resolution petitioning the General Assembly to amend the Roanoke Charter of nineteen fifty-two to reflect a change in election dates and meetings of council generally.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna recognize the city attorney for any comments you may have.
This is, Mr. Mayor, just something that we've done the past several years, to have our charter conform with what currently is the law, and to conform with our regularly scheduled elections.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter, please?
No, sir.
Okay, well, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and ask my colleagues if they have any comments that they'd like to make regarding this matter. Heard none? Oh, Mr. Pretty?
Just that it seems like we will need to do this every year until we don't need to do this anymore.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Tavallison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Oh, now, where is the rest of my papers? What would I do without you, Joe? Get these papers all mixed up up here. Item sixteen is a petition for appeal filed by Jeffrey Kemp, appealing a decision of the Architectural Review Board denying a request for the approval to install three historically accurate windows on the front facade and certain several vinyl replacement windows on the sides and rear of the house located at sixteen twenty-eight Patterson Avenue Southwest. Jeffrey Kemp is the representative spokesman. A report of the Architectural Review Board recommending that council affirm its decision to deny the request, which is not consistent with H two guidelines. Bill Mason, Bill is the chairperson. So, I'll call on Mr. Kemp. And following Mr. Kemp's opening remarks, I'll call on Mr. Mason.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to hear my petition. I appreciate you making room for me in and amongst the other important business of the city. Uh, secondly, I'd like to take a chance to thank my neighbors who've written in and shown support in many other ways, uh, including showing up right back here. Uh, a lot of these people I'd never even met before this all started. Um, uh, my family and I have been truly surprised and touched by the level of support and engagement our neighborhood has shown over this particular issue. Uh, I've moved around a lot in my life and I've never been part of a community like this and it, it really goes to show what a special place Roanoke can be. As for the situation with the windows, uh, I asked for and received permission to remove, inspect, and refurbish the windows. I did that to the best of my ability. Unfortunately, due to decades of neglect, every single window was severely damaged in some way. Some had dried and split from sun exposure, some had rotten due to moisture buildup. I salvaged what parts I could and provided photographic evidence of the weather damage to the historic preservation planner. The historic planner agreed that most of these windows were beyond repair, so I asked for and received permission to begin replacing windows. It is important to me that the council understands that I was in communication with the city throughout this process. It was also never my intention to drastically alter the historical facade of the building. Quite the opposite. One of the first things I did was to remove the nonhistoric aluminum storm windows that had been covering the original wooden windows. I was also able to salvage enough sash pieces from around the home that I could reuse them in the front. I then refurbished, reglazed, and hand-built frames and trimmed to the exact original specifications. I stripped and reconditioned all the original pulleys and latching hardware. These are three completely rebuilt, completely historically accurate windows, ready to go in to the street-facing windows as soon as this gets approved. I may not have the education or the expertise of the members of the Architectural Review Board, but I feel like I can understand and appreciate what it is that they're trying to accomplish. I've taken pains to be respectful, both of the historic nature of the building and of the work of the A R B. I understand the desire to hold on to a few perfect slices of the Roanoke of the past, not just for ourselves, but for the future as well. Unfortunately, in this situation, the perfect is the enemy of the good. In this neighborhood, the choice is not museum-quality perfection versus new construction. The choice is a well-maintained home versus a nuisance. Many homes along the street sit empty, slowly rotting away, or are rented out with little or no maintenance ever performed. Some are occupied by squatters and some are just burned out. If the city wants these buildings preserved for the future, it has to make it economically feasible for us to do so. These windows are a perfect example of that. I was able to exactly match the windows, the size and the profile by having affordable, efficient windows custom-built. The total cost of these custom-built windows was roughly fourteen hundred dollars. After I added some custom supports and wood trim, they are, as you can see from the pictures I submitted, virtually identical to the wooden windows in appearance. If I were to redo this project with the windows that the historical planner has recommended, aluminum-clad exteriors, which I will point out, are also not historically accurate. I have this project priced out at eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. This is just for one floor of a two-story building. I am not the only person running into this problem of being pushed into extravagantly priced replacements during refurbishment. I'm not even the only person facing this problem with windows on the sixteen hundred block of Patterson Avenue. I knew I was signing up for more work, taking on historic home refurbishment, both in terms of the physical labor involved and in terms of the paperwork and red tape. I didn't mind the weeks of stripping, sanding, rebuilding, and glazing that it took to evaluate these windows and to build the historic replacements. I didn't complain about the days of documenting conditions, filling out paperwork, and emailing back and forth with the historic planner. I was prepared for a month or two delay that all of that would add. But all told, it has been a year and a half long ordeal with what anywhere else in the city would have been a phone call to the permitting department, a thirty-five-dollar check, and a weekend's work. With that in mind, I'd like to respectfully request that the members of the city council allow me to maintain the work that I've already completed to date and allow me to move forward on finishing up this part of my refurbishment. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna call on Mr. Bill Mason, uh, Chair of the Architectural Review Board, for his remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. Uh, so this one is right at the heart of the need for some, uh, evaluation of our current guidelines. The guidelines that council wrote or gave to us clearly say not to use vinyl replacement windows. So, um, we have been discussing for some time the need to have some action as far as the, uh, evaluation of the guidelines, perhaps community input, uh, so that we can, uh, um, make things a little more clear and go a little smoother. Mr. Kemp's got a good point. Um, I think, Mr. Cowell, uh, you've been advised that staff's working. Our next meeting is specifically to, uh, uh, schedule and kind of get an outline around what we're gonna try to do, but, uh, majority of, uh, that is gonna, gonna require us, um, you know, getting your, your help and getting input from the community so that we can, uh, amend guidelines as needed. There was some confusion. I, I'm very confident that, uh, staff, uh, would not have recommended replacing windows and certainly would not have recommended replacing windows with vinyl. Um, he's, he, he's very consistent with that and, and, uh, but there was this miscommunication or this, uh, lack of, uh, understanding. It was a split city, it was two for when it came up. That wasn't because, um... It was okay that it was vinyl. It was because of all the extenuating circumstances that we just heard about. Happy to respond, any questions?
Any. Well, with your hand...
I have a question, and this might be more for, uh, for the city manager. We've been talking about these changing of the standards for the historic district for some time now. What are we looking at a timeline? Because I hate when we have to have these discussions, uh, because of guidelines that were made back in, what, nineteen seventies?
Yeah, I think you heard the discussion that their next meeting is on this topic. This discussion has occurred before. I mean, in fairness to the board, the board implements the standards that have been adopted by council. What you've asked the board to do is to gather public comment, gather ideas, gather recommendations and suggestions. I know that previously they had, um, some assistants come in from outside to kind of share with them some of the other practices and standards that apply to this area and stuff. But I don't know right now that the board actually has a timeframe for when they're gonna come back with suggestions or ideas, um, for you all. I mean, you know, it's an interesting situation because they're responsible for implementing the code that you've adopted. You've asked them to give you suggestions to amend the code that you've adopted. So I don't know, um, yet if they've gotten to that point because they've got to have some guidance as to where, where ultimately folks want to go with these regulations. I mean, we, we're here pretty regularly, um, you know, a couple times a year. Um, and almost every single time you hear folks stand at the podium, I mean, I'm gonna say faulting the board, faulting staff. The reality is, the code is the code and that's what they're trying to actually all enforce and, and address and, and deal with. This is not about communication. This is not about whether or not the, the, it's about the fact that there are regulations that you all put in place that people have identified as being onerous or... Now, as soon as we start talking about changing these, you're gonna find the other side of this equation, but, uh, but there isn't really currently a timeframe attached to it that I'm aware of, uh, from the board.
I think there needs to be. Mr. Mayor, at this point, like, we, we've been talking about this for a long time. And whether, whether that's the board doing something? I mean, we're, we're not subject matter experts. We go, we have you on a board to recommend things and give us your recommendations because that's, you know, more your specialties. Um, you know, we don't necessarily all know the building practices about vinyl windows and wooden windows and how much they cost. So, you know, I, I am disheartened to see another A R B, um, uh, appeal about windows. Uh, I'm a realtor and I know in, if you sell a house in Old Southwest, those windows are coming as-is because it's in the historic district. So, this is just an issue that has been festering in Old Southwest and over on Patterson Avenue, Mountain View area, and I'd like to see something, uh, moving forward.
Does, uh, I, I'm coming to you, Mr. Pretty. Okay, so you don't have any questions of Mr., uh, Mason?
Actually, that was basically why, why haven't we gotten here? I phrase it as a question.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let me go to Mr. Pretty first, and I'll come back.
I could just phrase it as a question. It's ask, like, do you think you could get this done by, you know, June or July of next year? Six months from now of at least to put together what these recommendations might be? Because as it relates to the broader application, I empathize with the position that the A R B has to take based on the guidelines and the rules that we have. You're just enforcing the rules as they are and then we find ourselves in this endless cycle. I remember the last time I was sitting out there when this discussion happened. Um, so, so it was not too long ago, but it was that long ago. Um, but you also need the resources and you need the support from the city and this council about direction and where to go. So that way, going forward, when you do enforce the rules, we don't come up here and try to rewrite them again. That way, you're just, um, enforcing what, um, we've said that we've agreed to. Um, and I, I really just wonder, I mean, do you think six months or by June of, of this coming year that we could have, uh, substantial input on recommendations on what this should be? Because otherwise, anything that happens between now and then, we'll continue to have conversations based on the responses to them.
Having advocated for this to occur for about three years now. I, uh, I think that with your attention and with the city manager's attention, we can get it done in six months. Um, I, I would say, uh, our, Mrs. Wilson, that the, the last review of the guidelines was twenty eleven, so it hasn't been that far back, so.
That'll be at least a little, little less work.
Mr. Pretty, are you, are you done?
Yes, I, I have other comments to make later, but that's the only question I have.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Uh, the question I have for you, Mr. Mason, is you mentioned, uh, something about confusion, uh, between, I guess, I don't know if it was confusion from the staff and the applicant, uh, uh, as to what was being done here. I was trying to follow that piece, I wasn't sure.
You know, I, I would, uh, sort of following up Ms. Moon Reynolds with, uh, uh, the, the report that you've got, um, that, uh, you know, I think Mr. Kemp thought he had approval. And, uh, um, and I think staff intended that he had approval to rebuild and replace the windows. Rebuild and replace, not buy vinyl windows and replace. And so that's, you know, somewhere in there that there was this miscommunication, lack of, uh, and... That's how it happened.
Because he wa, it wasn't specifically spelled out that he had to replace them with wood, let's say wood instead of vinyl. He, it was just said you need to replace your windows. And they were giving him the certificate, uh, or either he was applying for the certificate of appropriateness to do that. And then it came back that you did it with vinyl and not wood. So that's not, if within the H two guidelines. Am I closing it all?
As gray as you can make all of that, that's how it was.
Right, that's what I'm trying, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes.
And therefore, and, uh, just, we know the answer, but just for the public, in order to comply, you gotta rip out all of that vinyl and put in wood?
You would have to apply.
Apply and then...
Rip out all that vinyl and put in wood, yes, ma'am.
Right.
In order to follow the guidelines.
Right, because as it stands now, what happens if he does not comply? He keeps the vinyl and we don't? If, if it hadn't came before council, uh, to make that, unfortunately, make that decision to say you didn't follow the guidelines?
My recollection is that the last time this happened, you gave the homeowner a year. Um, and it's my understanding that year has passed and nothing's been done.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
And the answer to that question then becomes a code violation that we then pursue through the courts.
Right, which is for the owner who did this a year ago and nothing been done, he's gotta go to court.
So same thing could apply easily.
Let me, uh, talk to Mr. ...
With the permission of council, I'd like to just ask a couple of questions that might lend some clarity.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Is the homeowner willing to have wooden windows on the front of the property? Yes, sir. So we're talking about the side and the rear? That's correct. And the rear can't be seen from the right-of-way, can it? Uh, no. Okay, and the side typically, is that seen from the right-of-way? If it's a corner lot, then the interpretation has been most recently that that would be a front-facing side as well, so. And is this a corner lot?
That's what I think it was not.
So therefore, it's a side and the rear.
Yes, yes, it was not, and that's what it is.
But on the front-facing the street, he's willing to do historically accurate wooden windows? Actually, they're rebuilt original windows. Rebuilt original windows. And it's only on the side and the rear? That's correct. And if I can play attorney for two seconds, wouldn't you agree that at least with the rear, that can't be seen from the right-of-way? Sure. And isn't it also true that the Architectural Review Board evaluates that which can be seen from the right-of-way, correct? That would be the primary, uh, focus. However, the entire structure is, the external structure is the purview because, for instance, if somebody wanted to redo the back of their house and change the doors and windows and put a deck out there, then they have to get it, they apply to us for that. So it, it doesn't necessarily, but the guidelines are less restrictive on the sides and the back. Okay, thank you. I hope that gives some help to council.
Well, it, it does. Let me just say my comments, and I normally don't comment until everybody's had a chance to say some things, but I, I, I'm gonna allude to something that, uh, Mr. Pretty has said and something that I've heard from, uh, Ms. White Boyd is that we structured these guidelines for the Architectural Review Board. And they're following what we put down, they're following what we suggested. And so, uh, I just want to make sure we consider that when we, we're deliberating on what we're doing. These are guidelines that we put in place that we asked them to enforce for us. So, uh, as we go forward, and I think it's a good thing, we're gonna revisit this and do a lot of that in the months ahead. But as we deliberate, uh, please consider that. And so, I just wanted to share that. Yes, sir.
Is there anyone who could talk to Mr. Kemp?
Sure. Yes, sir, he'd come back. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Kemp, with the, my understanding from reading this is that you have rebuilt three of those, uh, windows from the originals, correct?
Correct, I was able to salvage original sashes. I, I hand-built with, like, original materials frames for them to go in. They're ready to go in. Maybe not this week because it's Thanksgiving, but right away.
Is there any way for you to do that for those other windows?
I mean, is it doable? Yes, I spent weeks building the three that I did.
Okay.
Um, it was, they, I spent as much money on the materials for those as I did. Um, it was, they, I spent as much money on the materials for those as I did for the entire window units, brand new.
Gotcha.
Um, so there would be that additional expense and uh, I mean, to be honest with you, I I rebuilt the windows, but, you know, they say we, they don't build them like they used to, and in a lot of time, a lot of cases, it's an indictment, and in some cases, there's a reason we don't build them like that anymore.
Yeah.
Um, the windows that I built, as good as I, as as good as they are, as historically accurate as they are, they're gonna be louder, they're gonna be leakier, they're gonna be less efficient. Um, and I've actually planned the layout of what rooms are gonna be used for what, based off of the fact that these three in the front are gonna have these leakier, less efficient, less good windows.
The wood windows that would be a replacement if they, if they weren't vinyl?
Mm-hmm.
How much, have you priced out how much those would be to?
Uh, they were, they were one thousand four hundred twenty dollars and change each. That does not include taxes, and that does not include delivery. Um, and for reference, the windows that I put in cost me a hundred and ninety-eight dollars apiece, so a significant difference.
And then there's been some question about the 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 uh the permission or approval of these. Could you just tell us what your side or what you uh felt give you that?
The the previous discussion, I didn't take any issue with the way that that Ms. Moon Reynolds uh laid it out. It was essentially that I thought I had permission, I had permission to put in replacement windows, and I think the assumption was made on this, the the part of the staff that I would do wood, and the assumption on my part was that I would do what was most efficient and fit best, and neither of us squared that circle. I found out almost a year later that the board does have these pre-approved windows, and that's what I went through and priced them out, but at that point, I already had my windows in, and uh to say that spending an additional seven to eight times as much per window to redo work I'd already done was not an appealing thought for me.
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're down to the point, uh, no one else has any questions, to either affirm uh the decision of the Architectural Review Board to deny the request or uh to have it, reverse the denial and have let Mr. Let uh Mr. Kemp know that uh that he has to change the windows to get in compliance.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that we can do, uh, I know you talked about um somebody, giving somebody a year to do these things?
Remand?
If we're talking about, you know, possibly having an a a an amendment to these in the next year?
Mr. Remand, to remand it back, to give him a year.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if if that might be a solution for this certain, this uh case, because we are looking at that.
May I have some input on this, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so my thought in that instance, though, is that um we would be leaving this individual hanging, though, then, until these things are done, and we're kind of making him the impetus of finally getting these done versus if we were to reverse it and change the rules with which these would then be be in compliance anyways, it, then he would be able to sleep better for the next six months while we update them, uh, and then they put them in compliance anyways. So that that would be, my suggestion would be to to just reverse the decision of ARB rather than tie it to the update itself.
Well, before we vote on, you gotta, I want-
I'm just, I'm just giving my input, not making a motion.
Well, I, my position would be, Mayor, that we don't know what the outcome would be. They still might review them, and they still might determine that the windows are not appropriate, so we should not do it contingent upon that either, because we cannot make that assumption that they would then be in compliance without having reviewed the historical aspects of it and putting together new policies. I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that.
And I did wanna say one thing, if I could, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Is, I would suggest, because of the confusion here, and it may have been part of the, which is part of the problem, is uh I think the staff needs to be clear when uh someone comes to them with regards to replacements, that they make it clear uh what the guidelines say that it is, and be specific when you say that it's wood and not just replacing windows, because if not, we'll still continue to have this same issue, and it puts council in a bad position to have to now decide because of something staff and the petitioner have, you know, what walked away with one thing and one thing, and the other one is thinking another, but then it falls on council to now say yes or no.
Well, I I think, let me ask Mr. Mason, because I think they felt they were pretty clear.
Well, the standards are very clear.
Yeah, the sta- but I mean, if you're not clear about your standards, I know, but-
If somebody says replacement windows, it explicitly prohibits vinyl. The standards are very clear.
But just to be clear, that they understand the standards when someone comes, just to be clear.
Well, I think, in this case, they did, they, they, I-
Did they? Okay.
I mean, I-
It is a very confusing situation. I believe that the applicant, I I think that he, I I, you know, he's being honest, and and I know that staff is very clear, if if it, if they're asked, that you have to a-apply to re- replace windows and that vinyl won't be approved. Somehow, this one, and it is, the idea, I think, was that Mr. Kemp was going to uh cannibalize old windows, starting with the back, and repair and replace broken old windows with w- windows that were constructed from the old pieces in the house.
Okay.
And so he was replacing windows with windows that he built, for the most part, from the pieces that were in the house or maybe had some pieces made. And so that was the idea that I think staff, and so staff's like, okay, he's replacing those windows, but he's rebuilding them, and, you know, this is all okay. And then I think Mr. Kemp got the idea, oh, it's okay. And in fact, I mean, if you read carefully, in one place, he specifically says he's replacing windows in in the uh um uh the permit request. So it just, I mean, it, we we haven't had one anywhere near that confusing in the seven years I've been on the board. I mean, this is, yeah.
So he never went back to say, although I cannot replace them with wood, I'm gonna put in vinyl?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I want, okay, now that answers my question. He took it apart himself to say, oh, this is not working, I'm gonna put in the vinyl. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, anybody ready to, Vice Mayor?
I struggle to even bring this up, but it's, it it has to do with efficiency. And and my understanding is that the recommended window is that's, was, I guess, added up to eleven thousand three hundred dollars for the, each individual one, that that's the price point. Um, i- is that based on historical integrity and efficiency, or is that just based on historical integrity? I mean, I'm I'm wrestling with this question because so many houses in historic districts have these, these energy leakage problems, and it's doors, it's windows, I mean, you name it. And people who are very conscientious, as as I know our staff is, and the ARB is, are are conscientious of this and and how some of these things have changed over time. So I I'm hopeful that that will be a major consideration, um, not just in terms of efficiency and 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 how that works with historical integrity, but also cost. I mean, we're we're dealing, we're living in a time now where we're we're just seeing in our capital improvement projects, the costs for construction are double, triple, and when we apply that to a homeowner, uh, that could maybe prohibit it to them buying a home and and refurbishing it. So there are a lot of things kind of clashing here, and I'm not hearing, um, what I'm hearing is a desire for there to be some clarity about this, um, in a way that's affordable. Uh, I I I don't, you know, Mr. Kemp, I, it's clear to me that you care about this house, you're willing to make the investment, uh, it's clear to me that the ARB recognizes that. Um, but where the clash is, is is in the guidelines as they are, and we're not yet where they're going to be, but but also this clash between cost and efficiency and historical integrity. And I think, I I'm just, I bring this up to say, I hope we can find a way to address that with some clarity uh in the renewal of these guidelines, and as Mr. Mason said, this is kind of a unique situation uh where this is coming up. But I also want to mention that part of the struggle, and I and I I can't even imagine how difficult this is for staff when they become aware of it, is a lot of times repairs are made on houses without permits ever being drawn. And so then we run into this inconsistency of practice where you have houses, and I think, Mr. Kemp, you noted this in your report, there are seven houses that have all vinyl windows. Well, how did that happen? Well, it it probably happened because permits weren't drawn to, and and staff can't keep track of all of that. I mean, they they have to go on what's drawn or unless they're notified or something. So it it puts them in an awkward position, too. So I I I just raise these things because I think they're they're really important considerations in this.
All right, thank you. All right. I can't make a motion, so what is, what's the, what's the, this counsel?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, reversing it allows him to keep his vinyl windows, just making sure we have this correct. Reversing allows him to keep his vinyl windows, and reversing the decision, I'm just making sure I'm asking, because I thought something was said earlier that sounded like the opposite.
Yes, you would reverse-
To allow him to keep it.
And then issue-
Certificate of appropriateness, okay, just to make sure.
Yes.
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to reverse the decision of the City of Roanoke Architectural Review Board and to grant the request to retain the vinyl windows installed on the second-level sides and rear of the building for property located at sixteen twenty-eight Patterson Avenue Southwest. Do I have to read the rest? I need to read the rest?
No.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, Madam Clerk, before I, I tell you motion, what was, did you?
I do have one speaker that wanted to speak on the matter, but I didn't know if we allowed speakers at this point, on this issue.
Well, I think we've got a motion on the floor, uh, Spencer, so I think we have to act on that?
Act on the motion.
All right, uh, Mr. Pretty has made a motion that we reverse uh the action taken by the Architectural Review Board, and it's been seconded. So you may call the roll, and you can either vote yea or nay on that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
No.
Mr. Volleson?
No.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Yes, you do.
I see it both ways.
I do, I really do.
I, you can't tell me that Ms. Moon Reynolds don't have a vote, but you know.
I know, I tell you, you you got me here now, you really do. Um.
Sisters, I'm gonna reverse.
So that's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
No.
Four, three.
All right.
Four, reversing.
All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
And I will tell you, and planning staff, please listen, spring, we will have revised ordinances in front of you for this, and they will run the gamut from complete removal of the standards, because I know we're talking about windows day, but let's be honest, we've talked about gutters, we've talked about roofs, we've talked about cost. What I'm hearing and what I'm seeing action on is frankly, lack of support for the historic standard. So run the gamut from no standard to something in between what we have currently. That will come back here no later than April in a presentation form, and May, action.
So, Mr. Kyle, I'd reinterpret that as a, maybe a liberal interpretation of them rather than a lack of support.
When you're talking about things like evaluating costs, you're not, I mean-
I don't know, I talk about evaluating costs.
But there was conversation about cost, and if cost becomes part of the equation, I can assure you, it costs more to actually do the historic preservation pieces. One of the reasons that you've created standards, or one of the reasons you created incentive program that actually allows for tax credits associated with improvements on older homes and stuff, is the recollection, or is the understanding that those become more expensive and stuff. And again, I'm not saying we're gonna land on that, I'm just saying we will bring you the full spectrum from, there are no standards in these districts, all the way through to something else in there, and then you all can determine kind of where you are, because our starting point will be, what actions have you taken over the course of the years to approve? That that's the starting point. If consistently the council, for example, has approved the use of vinyl windows, we're gonna recommend that you probably permit vinyl windows, because you've made a, you've made in effect policy statements that have said that is supported by the council. So we'll start there and kind of work our way through, but the key piece is, is gonna be back here in April, and it's gonna be ready for action by May, so that's, because nobody wants to sit through these conversations anymore, so. And and it's clear that the standards that are in place are in conflict with where the body wants to ultimately go, so let's fix that, so.
And I think, and question is, is the fact that there, do we have a historical districts or not? I mean, it, because that ultimately is-
And you will hear from residents when we have this discussion, who will take a position opposite of of some of the actions that have been made, because that is their position, is that in the historic districts, the historic integrity is supreme to all of the other responsibilities. So ultimately, that's that's the fun part you get to decide, so, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's why I always agree with ARB, because that's the purpose of the ARB, is to to um to maintain that historical aspect.
Mainly, I wanna make sure, you know, that we're not gonna, this is gonna get resolved by the spring, because I know no one likes to have these conversations repeatedly, so, and it's always about the same two or three topics, so.
Yeah.
Windows, roofs, and gutters.
Roofs, gutters, and windows, yep, that's it, so, yeah.
All right, Mr. Kemp, been reversed. Thank you, Bill. All right. Madam Clerk, we're down to item number seventeen, you're hearing assistance upon public matters.
Yes, yes.
Are there any assistance signed up?
Yes, we do, five. Um, Mr. Dwayne Howard, I don't believe he's here tonight. Deborah Richardson? I don't believe she's here. Laura Hartman?
Hi there. Um, I bring you all greetings from the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. Uh, I want to, in this season of gratitude, I want to thank you all for listening to us last month about the smoking areas at the bus station. It sounds like progress is being made on that issue, although it's not as fast as we would like, of course, but we'll, we'll be patient, we're bus riders, we know how to wait. Uh, we also thank you for supporting the new micro transit that's coming up. Uh, we've just heard that that will be beginning in January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's a new, it's a new service that we think is gonna need some publicity and support, so we hope that you all will help with that. Um, uh, I am partly here uh because uh I wanted to highlight something that's happening at Valley Metro, uh, that the the GRTC is engaging in some strategic planning, and this is a really important, once-a-decade opportunity. I want to encourage the GRTC to take bold steps towards the great transit that our great city deserves. And on that note, I want to share with you something that I am very proud of. So, as you know, I teach at Roanoke College, um, which means that I'm supposed to do scholarship, I'm supposed to write things that get published in academic journals, uh, and so I have here page proofs of the latest article that I I wrote along with Kate Willey, who you'll hear from soon, um, and I have copies for you all to read, so I'm gonna give this So I'm gonna give this, um, to, um, to, so that it can be distributed among all of, all of y'all. And I want to invite you to please take some time to read it. "It Explains the Importance of Transit in Clear and Undeniable Terms, Both Practical and Ethical." And it's so interesting, because I'm just finishing up this, the, this publication, and I heard on Wednesday on the radio, some of you may listen to NPR, anybody else listen to All Things Considered. I was listening to NPR last Wednesday on the fifteenth. Did you hear the piece about the transit death spiral? Have you heard of this? So the transit death spiral is the idea that, um, if an underfunded system offers bare bones an inconvenient service, which means that only a small number of users actually use it. Uh, and this becomes a death spiral, because an underperforming system doesn't invite investment from the government, and it just gets worse and worse. But there's an alternative, and the alternative, it's described in the radio piece, and we talk about it in this article, is called a virtuous cycle. A well-funded and higher-performing transit system attracts new riders. It gets better and better as it assumes its rightful place as the centerpiece of the community's well-being. So as I know y'all are getting ready for your budget retreat, uh, please consider how your decisions interface with the future of transit in our city. Valley Metro is doing this strategic visioning, but what they are capable of striving for connects with what y'all are willing to support. So on behalf of riders, we ask you to please dream big for us, keep us out of the death spiral, and move us toward the virtuous cycle of better and better transit for a better and better city. Thank you.
The next speaker is Catherine, Kathleen Woolley.
Good afternoon, y'all. Usually, I don't end going, up going right after her. Uh, so, hello. Uh, I hope you do read our paper. I worked very hard on it when I was still an undergrad, uh, and I am very proud of it, as is she. You can find all of the reasons we want to support, uh, transit in there. Public health, mental, social health, environmental sustainability, which Mr. Cobb mentioned today, the economy, poverty, uh, including a bunch of moral arguments about how it equalizes opportunity. Uh, I'm here to tell you a much more human reason to support transit alongside all of those academic ones. Uh, and it all boils down to the fact that I love Roanoke. I moved here on purpose. I love coming to these meetings. I am a political science, uh, major. And every time I come here, I learn a little bit more about how city government works, and it's genuinely so exciting to me. Uh, I love Going to Go Fest. I loved the multicultural festival, even though I got a terrible sunburn the last time I went. And I love visiting downtown Roanoke any chance I get. I have a favorite coffee shop, I go to the library, it's amazing. But in order to participate all, in all of those things, I need to overcome a barrier. And that barrier is the couple of miles between my apartment and downtown Roanoke. Usually, I use the bus. And when I can't use the bus, my roommate has a car, and we go together. That car cost us about fifteen thousand dollars. So at least half of the time, the barrier for participating in Roanoke community is about fifteen thousand dollars. That's doable for me and the person I live with. We are both young professionals, we know how to save our money, we're very careful. Not everyone is as lucky as us. And by keeping that barrier there, you are preventing those people from loving Roanoke as much as I do. How are they supposed to engage in the beautiful and vibrant society that we have here? How are they supposed to attend events hosted by the Diversity Center? How are they supposed to get to our public libraries? How are they supposed to come to these meetings to tell you about the things that are important to them? Every dollar you spend on public transit, whether it's making it more frequent, whether it's making it travel further, whether it's making it extend into Sundays and peak service hours, is one dollar off that barrier. It is one dollar more achievable for people to come and participate in Roanoke as I have been able to. That is why I am so passionate, that is why you see me so often, uh, and that is why I am a founding member of the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday.
And our last speaker is Thomas Lewis.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Thomas Lewis, and, uh, to the mayor, Mayor Lee, city council, and city manager. On behalf of the Friends of Washington Park, Gainsborough Southwest Neighborhood Organization, Gainsborough Historic Preservation, and a collaboration of other partners, we wish to thank you for not demolishing the Caretaker's House and allowing it to remain located in Washington Park as another amenity for the community along with the new pool facility. We appreciate you listening and addressing our concerns about the historical value of this landmark. We strongly believe that this was the right decision, that it should be preserved and renovated for adaptive reuse. Your support means a lot to us. We look forward to working together for a win-win solution that this house will once again become a beneficial asset to the city for decades to come. We love our parks. That means a lot to us, and we appreciate you listening to us. And we just hope that, um, and we, we certainly want you all to work with us together to maintain the Caretaker's House along with the pool renovation. So we just want to say thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
All right, thank you. And, uh, as, I said, did it again, but, uh, we said the city council set this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. And if deemed appropriate matters, will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council. So thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. Okay. If there be no further business to come before this council, the council meeting will be declared in recess to reconvene on Tuesday, November twenty-first, at eight thirty A.M.
In twelve, twelve hours.
At the Raleigh Court Library, twenty-one twelve Brandon Avenue Southwest, for budget plan and retreat.
Just in the very slightest way, twenty-one angles away, and just shoots past eight.